Pike.
Yes.
Aaronson.
Yes.
Lawhead.
Yes.
We declare the presence of a forum and we can open the meeting.
Thank you. So, we will open the meeting and I will point out that the open meeting announcement is on the table as always. We will be opening at 6:35. And then, let's stand up. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
The chair.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
Our motion to approve the agenda.
One second.
And Larry, vote.
Yes.
And Pam.
Yes.
And then, we need to, we're going to review the invoices like we started last time so that we can refer those here. Yeah. So, we'll run through those right quick so everybody knows what we're paying. And before, I'm kind of distracted here because I want to say before I go too far in here that I want to introduce our other person at the table. This is Joe McNally from McNally &amp; McNally, our attorney firm. We have seen his dad, but this is the first time he's graced us with his, our presence. This is Joe. Okay, so let's take a look.
I believe in your package, those of you who got them, there is a list in there of bills you can follow along, right on there.
The first is two varieties of wireless, that's just normal telephone bill. They're not in the same order, so I'm going to go through here so we're not. Then we have arts garage, garbage, which is our trash, we have no problems. We have Black Hills Energy, that I just said was Black Hills Gold. So, we're going to treat them nicely tonight. We have the Cedar Knox, these are all just utilities, folks, and there's not a whole lot we can do with these other than pay them. Water, our Cedar Knox Water Bill. Caton International, that's our friends across the street that do all kinds of good things for us. And that's $105, so that's pretty cheap this month. Colonial Life is the policies that our employees pay for themselves. It's a group policy where they get some benefits and we pay the premium for Colonial Life and then that's deducted from their paycheck. So, that's not costing them anything, so that you see that. The Crofton Journal, we have to pay Andrew. And that's $250, $260.92 this month. The bank card is $44.30. That's primarily postage, the guys use that to get the water samples off and those kinds of things. We have a list of all of those and most of them is that. The Great Plains Communication, another utility, for $339. And of course, remember Great Plains, we are not watching TV in here, but they have the internet service. Knox County Clerk, this is the bill for the general election which is coming up, $217.37. Not bad, when I first talked to Joanne, she thought it would be.
Who knows what else?
Well, I thought maybe it was. Maybe not, maybe we'll get another one. Lee, this is the lease on the copyright. Can I take this? That's $69 a month. Kirk &amp; Michael is the engineering firm that's handling our wastewater plant. And the initial cost of this way, way, way back was an agreement for $6,100 and it had, there was a contract that was laid out as to what would be included in the services for that $6,100. It was set up to pay every month and we just paid like last month something that I thought was a payoff because it had a statement there and it came down to $122, so I thought, well, we're done with that. And then we got another bill, but apparently there were some bills, May, April?
June and July.
June and July of last year that were not paid. So, we are paying them $1,098, which I think completes that contract. And we'll go over that in more detail and I'll call them this week. We'll find out, we'll make sure we've got that all clear. We have a bill for McNally Law Office for $1,133.90. Oh, next one. And I guess I would like to explain on that, our agreement with McNally Law was for a flat $250 a month. And then mileage one way when they come to meetings, and they have attended, I think three or four since they started, this is the third. When they confer with somebody else for us or investigate something, then we get charged of hourly fee. So, this has been quite reasonable for the time we've had. The Michael Harold is the one that put our rocks on for us, $72.72. And we had, we'd paid him something, but it didn't, we got some extra keys made and so forth. Midwest Laboratories is that testing, the waters and all that, $189.50. We have the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services. That's a pool certification.
Pool permit renewal.
Permit, it's a permit renewal, excuse me.
For this one.
And that's 40 bucks. So, we're going to charge all those kids an extra penny. Nebraska Auditors, we paid them $1,000. Is that for this passage, just this recent one? So, this is the one we are just completing, right?
That was the last one.
It's the last one?
Yeah.
Okay. One call concepts.
That's the Digger's Hotline.
Oh, okay. So, when we call on permits and so forth, we have, we get.
They notify us when you get a call.
Okay. All right. So, it's $1.40, $1.40. One Office Solutions where we get our office supplies, $32.49, we're doing pretty well. And we're going to get us a new stapler. And a new hole punch. And that, we have People's Grocery for $10.78. And we have Step In Service for $40. Telebeep Service Wireless for $18.61. These are all, you can tell what they are. If you have questions, call her. West Hudson Supplies for $3.59. Kathy?
Yes.
This is Wentz.
It's refunding the deposit.
Okay.
So, is that what Wentz Ray funeral, that they made his father was going back?
Okay. Deposit for one.
Auditorium money.
Oh, for auditorium, gotcha, okay. For the auditorium, and then the cash. Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. Any questions? That's an easy one. We have to have payroll.
They're actually estimated.
Okay. Where's the? At the end?
Very long.
I've gone away. We have the estimated payroll and it's like it always is, we estimate every two weeks so that it's paid on time and then we break out the, what is estimated and what is the actual. So, we have $12,000 for January 27th to February 9th and the same for the 10th to the 23rd and then the 24th to the 9th and March 10th to the 23rd. So, payroll's on a two-week basis, so they get paid every two weeks. The estimated credit card stays at $200 and the estimated sales tax stays at $1707.54. These are in the package that you could have been on, so you can double check those if you want to. The est, I do want to say that the December 30th to the January 12th actual pay, payroll was $7,077.64. The taxes were $1179.76 and the IRAs, $211.86 and the IRA employer part was $144.24. So, we're well within those estimated ranges, so we're always okay, so we can keep our people paid. Okay. Questions? Any questions? This is two, this is two weeks. They're set up a week. These are weeks.
Yeah, but you must know we're proving.
All of them, yeah, because it's two pay per month, yeah. Anything else? Okay. Okay, yeah, we'll pay, we'll do that later. We're going to approve those later. So, if anybody has questions, let us know. Kind of did this so it would kind of give us a little bit at the beginning, give us some time. If people can't make it quite at 6:30, we've had some people like to have meetings a little later, so we thought we'd do this because not everybody needs or wants to hear that and some do. Does anybody need a break before we go on? We're pretty close in, okay. So, then I would, you have a copy of the minutes of the January 23rd meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve those if there are no amendments.
I'll make motion to approve the January 23rd minutes.
Okay. Moved by Larry, seconded by Pam. So, call for the vote. Pam?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Okay. We, we have two liquor licenses applications. There is the St. Rose Fish Fry coming up and the Fireman's Dance. So, anybody object to any of that? Any discussion? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve those.
We have to do one at a time.
We can do both of them.
Okay. A motion to approve the liquor license for the Fireman's Dance and for the St. Rose Fish Fry.
Okay, moved by Larry, seconded by Larry. Then, call for a vote from Larry?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
Okay, now, we would like to welcome a representative from Northeast Nebraska Economic Development. And I knew that I recognized you, but I didn't get over to say hello before the meeting, so welcome.
Thank you.
Your name, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll just introduce myself, that's okay.
Okay. Would you, would you like to have the podium?
I could just sit here if that's mine.
That's fine.
Or if you want me to stand up or.
Whatever you want. Would you like the microphone?
Just the microphone? Sure.
Thank you.
I think I'll just sit.
Okay.
Well, first of all, my name is Tom Higginbotham. I am the Executive Director of the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District. I've been there just about 19 years. So, first of all, thank you for inviting us up here to talk about membership to the Economic Development District. I'll give you a packet of information. What's inside there is a brochure on us and then a brochure on a couple of our housing programs, our business loan program, and another brochure, just a general information about the state of Nebraska, departments that are out there that have funding for projects. Our last year's annual report, which kind of gives you a good synopsis of the work that we did last year in the region. But I'll start off with just a little bit of history. Back in the 70s, the state of Nebraska created nine development regions. And inside your packet, you'll see a piece of paper and there's a map that looks like this. Those are those nine regions, I think it's on behind the brochures. But anyway, those are the nine regions in the state statute that the state of Nebraska created back in the 70s or 80s, I believe. And obviously, if you're looking at that map, we are the maroon, 16 counties, we serve 16 counties in Northeast Nebraska. We are a quasi-governmental agency, so we're not, obviously, we're a local government, we have no taxing authority, and we're not a 501(c) anything, so we're kind of stuck in the middle there. So, we were created back then to, you know, assist communities with community and economic development projects. We have a, I'll just start off with our, we are a dues-paying organization, so our communities currently pay $1.27 per capita with a minimum of $635. So, I think Crofton, that'd be around $930 for the year. Our fiscal year is July 1 through June 30th. I think this July, our actual, our dues go up one penny to $1.28 with a minimum of $635. So, Crofton would be above that minimum. For those membership dues, we do a wide range of services for our communities. The first thing we like to do is strategic planning, help the community figure out what their needs are, whether it's housing, infrastructure, rehabilitating downtown, those kinds of things. And then, once we do that, we kind of try to help identify some of the top priorities that we can work on and create action plans on how we're going to attack, attack those items. And then, once we have some action plans, you know, and we work with the city and the state of Nebraska, mostly the Department of Economic Development, they have grant programs that are geared specifically and only to the local governments in Nebraska. Maybe you've heard of it, I think Crofton has probably had some in the past, years ago. The Community Development Block Grant Program, that's administered by the federal government, HUD. Those monies are only available to local governments. They have money for planning, they'll paper comp plans, housing studies, those kinds of things. They have housing funds, which, there's a wide range of items there, housing rehabilitation, direct home buyer assistance, new construction, rental, all of the above. They also have tourism category, if your project is tourism related. And they also have an economic development program where they have funds for helping businesses expand or come into the community. We do have a set of bylaws that are governed by our organization and one thing we do require our members is to pass a resolution and sign an interlocal agreement with the Economic Development District. And I do have a copy of that. I apologize for, I only made one copy, but there's a copy of a resolution behind that. One thing about that, with the Interlocal Agreement Act and the state statute, a lot of these grants that we work with, there's administration. And the state of Nebraska pays for that administration, it's built into the grant. And one thing that, if we have an interlocal agreement with a community member, then they can hire us directly to do that administration. They don't have to go out and procure for those services like you do for other professional services, as an example. So, as an example, if you're going to do a water project or a street project and you've got some community development block grant funding, if you didn't have an appointed engineer for the last three years, you would have to go out for proposals to hire an engineer. If you bid the project, you have to bid out the project, you know, for contractors and pick the lowest bid or the most reasonable bid. But for the administration side, our members don't have to go through that process, they can hire us directly because of that interlocal agreement. So, that's a good advantage of that, so. And the state of Nebraska pays for 100% of those dollars on administration. And that's another important thing that we do is, you know, we're certified with the state of Nebraska as administrators, so we get trained every year, we stay certified, we have to take a test every five years to administer those programs. And you have to have a certified administrator to administer those programs because there's a lot of, a lot of federal requirements go along with that, so. But I would encourage you to, you know, to, I mean, like I said earlier, you know, the first thing that we do is strategic planning, you know, help the city sit down and figure out what the needs are and what the citizens' thoughts are through surveys, town hall meetings and those kinds of things. And that's one thing that we really need to focus on as we work with these grants, they're highly competitive, you know, if you want to go after grant funding for projects, you know, they want to know what you have done in the past, what you're currently doing and what your future plans are, because the way they look at these programs is they're making investments in your communities. And I know you've got JEO here, you know, they've been involved in a lot of our communities on the engineering side of projects and they could, they could attest to how important these programs are to helping local governments, you know, move their projects forward, so. Like in our dues, it's one, it's an annual dues. For that, we could write one grant for you or 101. We don't charge for writing grants, that's what the dues are for. Our, our community dues are supplemented. We get a little bit of state money from the Nebraska Department of Economic Development and we also get a little bit of money from the federal government to help us complement the dues, to help us go out there and do what we do. Yeah, so we don't charge extra. But the only thing that we do charge extra for is we do have some staff that are knowledgeable in light substandard determination studies for tax increment financing. That's a little above and beyond what we do for our dues, so those we do charge a little extra. And it varies on the cost on those, if you're interested in that, it just depends on how big the area is, how many properties are in the area, and those kinds of things. But I would encourage you, as you're thinking about membership, it's been a few years since Crofton's been a member of the Economic Development District. Look at our annual report, you can see last year, you know, there was a little over $6.5 million brought into our region for community and economic development projects, which created, I think, around 78 jobs and we are assisting, going to assist about 38 homes. And that's pretty average. If I go back 10 years and look at our last 10 years of annual reports, that's pretty average of what is brought into the region, so, you know, that tells me, you know, that things are moving, you know, and, you know, and that communities are growing, you know, there's a lot of housing projects out there, a lot of infrastructure, water, sewer, streets. A couple of new programs that are really crucial that I think Crofton could benefit from in the future is a few years ago, the state of Nebraska created a couple of new programs called Downtown Revitalization and Community Development. And we've had a lot of our communities get into that downtown revitalization. It starts off with a study and then it kind of moves into, you know, the next year of getting some funds to help, you know, do facade improvements and those kinds of things to help, help the appearance, you know, and of course, take care of sidewalks if there's, you know, ADA accessibility issues and those kinds of things, so. But that's, that's kind of what we do, you know, for our members is, you know, we, you know, after we go through that strategic planning process, you know, we try to figure out, okay, what's the best way to get these projects done, how are we going to get it done? You know, who can we access funding from? You know, a lot of these grants have local match, you know, so we work with the government, the local government, you know, do they have the required match needed? If not, you know, where can we get it? You know, depending, it just kind of depends on the project, you know, if it's housing or infrastructure, so. And then, you know, if something pops up, you know, hey, you know, or such and such a business is going to close, you know, is there any help out there for them? You know, that's the other thing we do is you call us and if we personally can't help you, we will, you know, do our best to find someone that can. In addition to what we do for our services, we have a business loan program of our own. It's just a little bit over $10.5 million right now, our loan portfolio. And that is available to our 16 counties plus a few counties in central Nebraska, which is based on our funder, which is USDA. And the businesses in Crofton, Crofton does not have to be a member of the Economic Development District for businesses to access that program. You know, that is dictated by the funders that we have. So, any business in Crofton could call us tomorrow and say, you know, we're looking at expanding or starting a business, can you help us? And yes, we can. And then, the same thing with our housing program, we have a regional owner-occupied rehab program and a regional down payment assistance program. And the citizens of Crofton, Crofton does not have to be a member for individual families to access those programs. They just need to call us and if they qualify, they're all income-based and if they qualify, we can assist them. The advantage of, you know, Crofton being a member is, you know, if we go through the analysis or the strategic planning process and we determine, you know, that there is a huge need in Crofton that would warrant, you know, Crofton going after their own owner-occupied rehab, you know, for the city, then that's, that's an example of a grant that we would write on behalf of the, of the city and then administer that program.
So, if Crofton, you can remember, would we have a contact person or do we just get anybody?
Yes, we have three planners in our planning department. We always like to give some, our, every community someone to call as a name. But we are a small office, there's only 10 of us total. But behind the scenes, we do work together, so yes, there would be a point of contact.
One person that we deal.
That, yes, yes. And then, if that person is either on vacation or busy doing other things, then behind the scenes, you know, we work as a team.
So, everybody knows exactly what Crofton's going to be doing, so we don't have to start from square one again?
Absolutely. And we, and to facilitate that process, we have month, or Monday, every Monday of every week, we have a staff meeting and go through projects. So, we work, I mean, we have to be that way, we're such a small office.
And then you work with the local economic.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I mean, yeah. And that's our number one thing, is working with the local government. And if they have local economic development organizations, the ones that do, like Norfolk, Coming County, Fremont, Wayne, Creighton, you know, that have their own local economic development staff or nonprofit, the ones that have those, that'll have turned into our number one contact, you know, that we work with. Prior to that, it was 99.9% of the time, the senior village clerk, so. But absolutely, yeah. And if, you know, that one point person, you know, can't make the meetings just because we serve such a big area, then, you know, somebody else will come and facilitate that process, so.
Now, the paper you handed us was an example of a resolution that you would write.
Yes, yeah, that, that is our resolution for membership. And it's, also in your packet, you know, is our bylaws and it kind of states how our organization is run. One thing I did forget to mention, that every city and village that is a member gets to appoint someone to our, what we call our council of officials. That's how we're governed, by our council of officials. And then, we have a nine-member executive board that meets monthly. So, if Crofton became a member, then you guys would appoint one of you to sit on our council of officials. We encourage you to attend our monthly meetings. Our council of officials officially meet twice a year, in December and June. The June one is the important because that's where we elect new board members and elect our officers and approve our budget and those kinds of things, so.
So, your head office is in Norfolk?
Our head office is in Norfolk. It's been there the 19 years I've been there, I think, maybe going back 30 or 40 years ago, it would have been in Columbus, I think, before they moved to Norfolk. And we also have a little satellite office in Columbus and Fremont, so.
If you're intending on joining the organization or being a contributor until next month, you can have the proper resolution number and for that.
Okay, okay. And the other thing too is, I know when you visited with our deputy director, Tina Engelbart, you know, she mentioned that you might want to join now and we can obviously prorate your dues and I appreciate the attorney, I think that's a good way of doing it, you know, to get that resolution on the agenda, so it's proper. You know, so we could prorate your dues from your next meeting through the end of June and then our new dues cycle would start July 1st. So, you have a couple of options, if you want to get started now, we'll prorate the dues. Or if you wanted to wait till July 1st to become a member, you know, that's, that's an option too, so.
Or we can begin in March, too.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
I think we'll table until March, until then.
And the other thing too is, I know when you visited with our deputy director, Tina Engelbart, you know, she mentioned that you might want to join now, and we can obviously prorate your dues, and I appreciate the attorney. I think that's a good way of doing it, you know, to get that resolution on the agenda so it's proper. You know, so we could prorate your dues from your next meeting through the end of June, and then our new dues cycle would start July 1st. So, you have a couple of options. If you want to get started now, we'll prorate the dues. Or if you wanted to wait until July 1st to become a member, you know, that's an option too, so.
Or we can begin in March, too.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
I think we'll table until March, and then we can get, as Joe said, a proper resolution number and so forth.
And if you're joined in March, then I think, obviously, we would get started right away with the strategic planning process, you know, help working with you guys, with your economic development staff, and, yep, and working on some kind of survey, you know, that we're going to send out to the citizens. You know, that's one of the big things, especially with the Nebraska Department of Economic Development, you know, because a lot of their programs are targeted, you know, to serve a national objective, so they want to know that, you know, the citizens have input, you know, and is this truly what the citizens want?
And hopefully, we'll have an economic director at that development director.
And I know you also work, you know, with your county economic developer, Megan. And we work closely with her, our business loan specialist does on businesses too, so.
So, they would come up again in March, or wouldn't have to be here?
If you want us here, we'll be here, absolutely.
You don't have to be here?
We wouldn't have to be, but, you know, I think it'd probably be a good idea if we were. Just in case there's other questions about membership, I mean, because I encourage you to look through that information, you know, if there's different things in there you have questions about, you know, please call me.
Yep. We're not going to leave you alone. We'll be bugging you quite a bit.
Well, I'll tell you, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, so.
Yep, that's right.
But if there's any questions, that's all I got, if there's no other question.
The only other thing is, a lot of times, people say that Crofton could qualify for a lot of these monies because of income or whatever, but I know we talked with you a while back that if you do a second grant, say you have a lot of money.
There's some ways around that. I'll have to, and I'll have to go look at the census information, but especially the community development block grant program, you have to serve a national objective, and the main national objective is low to moderate income families, and that is 80% or below of the area median income for the county, based on their family size. So, housing, you're always going to qualify because every individual family has to meet that to get the owner-occupied rehab or this or that. Where you run into trouble with that is if your community on a citywide basis is not at or below that number, at 51% at least, then you don't qualify citywide. But there are ways around that, you know, to do parts of town. We did this, and I hate to take up all your time, but just as a quick example of that, many, many years ago, we did a small project in Pierce for street paving. Well, Pierce doesn't qualify citywide, so we figured out what streets do you want to do? So, what we did is we income qualified just the families that would benefit from those improvements. And then we applied for the grand dollars to help pay for the assessments of those low to moderate income. So, there's ways around that, depending on the project. You know, sometimes, you know, if, you know, it'd be hard to try to make a, you know, if you wanted to get a grant, you know, to do a comp plan.
Right.
But your community isn't low to moderate income, at least 51%, citywide, that's probably not going to work, you know, so you'd have to figure out other options to get that done, so.
Right.
And another one is, you know, for downtown, you know, a lot of our smaller communities have been using the Slum and Blight National Objective to get that done, so. But yeah, so, there's ways around that. We've got experience in doing that within the rules of HUD, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, we'll table it until next month. Thank you very much. So, now we have a couple of representatives from Black Hills Energy. So, keep folks with floor.
Thank you, thank you for having us. I'm Melissa Garcia, and I'm one of the community affairs managers for Black Hills Energy. And this is Clayton, and he's the operations supervisor for the region. And we're here today because in April, the franchise agreement that we have with the city of Crofton comes up for renewal. And so, we're here to give you that three months, just in case you want to take the three months for the three readings. About 90% of our communities end up waiting those three readings. That's because I know some of you are new. We'll just give you a little bit of background about what that agreement is. Going forward, it's two ordinances. So, it's in two pieces because one is the franchise agreement itself. And so, that's really just the agreement for us as a distribution company for natural gas to be working in your easements and provide natural gas to your citizens as an energy choice. The second one is a franchise fee. And so, that franchise fee is really just a local tax that we collect for your benefit. And it's in two different ordinances so that as we go into the future, if we are going to renew the franchise, we don't ever have to stop collecting that franchise fee unless we're breaking into that. How it's currently written is a little bit different, and that's another reason that April deadline is a little bit sensitive. As it's written now in your current agreement, it's an addendum or a change to the franchise, so it's tied to that term limit of that franchise. And it's that way because we collect those franchise fees on a volumetric scale. So, I think it's 87 cents per term delivered, and we do that because of the Choice Gas Program. So, when the Choice Gas Program came around, we have to do it by the amount of energy that we're delivering rather than gross receipts. So, many other of your franchise fees, you're doing it on gross receipts, you're collecting that. And we can't do that because we can't collect a fee on revenue that we're not receiving, and that's why those changes were made. And having these two different ordinances will separate those for us in the future looking at that. The franchise agreement, again, is that piece that really talks about how we are partner in the community as far as how our system works. And so, what you'll see in there is a really streamlined look, if you're comparing the old one to the new one, of how we come in the community and do that. So, we do ask for a 25-year commitment on that. 25 years is a long time, right? So, I have breathed for 25 years, and that's about all I've done consistently for 25 years. So, I know that that's an important fact to consider. We ask for that for a couple of different reasons. And one is it's just our goodwill to the community to say, we are committed to being in your community and offering natural gas for the foreseeable future. And likewise, it's a commitment from the city back to us saying, yes, we would like to have you here in our community offering natural gas. And that commitment's important because of the investments that we make on behalf of the company and for the residents. So, an example of that in Crofton would be two years ago. So, safety, the safety and integrity of our system is really important, right? You want safe, reliable energy, and we want to provide that to you. And so, one of those projects is an example, is taking the meters that were at the highway, and we've moved those all back to the structure. So, that gives us the confidence in making those investments and taking that risk because we know that the community is invested in us as well. The other piece of that is just for financial stability when it comes to the growth of the company itself and getting back into those projects. So, when we take on that risk, our funders actually look at that. So, we have franchises in all of the communities that we serve, and they look at that 25-year number. They kind of help to set that for us. With that, there are other pieces in there, the main questions that I normally get. So, it really does say that you allow us to be in your easements. The thing that's nice about this new agreement is it's very clear on who pays for what when it comes to public projects. The old agreement, not as clear on that. So, what this says in this agreement is if you have a public project, so you're going in, we heard talk about sewer and water projects earlier. So, if you're going in to do a sewer and water project, and we're in your way, then it's up to us to pay for us to move our own facilities. The old one doesn't necessarily lay that out. So, that puts that responsibility and that ownership back on us. There's a whole harmless agreement in there that protects the city. And, let's see, what else is the main question that we normally get? Those are really the big ones that come along with the conversations that we have. And again, the franchise fee itself, so that is, again, by volume, which is odd, but that's really based on the Choice Gas Program.
Okay, you said 25 years. And a lot of people out here, a lot of older people, I and myself, let's say, we don't know how to predict the future in 25 years, let's say, Black Hills Energy decided, okay, we're getting out of this, is the new company buying up? What does that do for our 25-year contract?
It just transfers over the same line. So, you'll look at the old franchise in there, that did not belong to Black Hills Energy. But when we acquired Source Gas, we adopted that.
So, we're still adopted by whoever buys?
Correct.
Black Hills out, we're not worried about doing this all over again?
Yes, that's correct. Yep, it's a seamless transfer.
If you look at the old ordinance, it says Can Energy, Can's Corporation, and when you came in, you get sued all.
Yes, that's correct. And the same is with this one. Great question. Well, one other thing I'll share, you talked a little bit, you know, with an agency that's focused on economic development and growth in their communities. And that's one thing that I really appreciate being a part. So, rural economic development is my background. And there's two things with Black Hills that I've really grown to appreciate, just being with the company the three years that I have. And it's really, one, that we're invested in our communities. And so, if you're focused on growth, we want to be focused on growth with you. So, we really look at feasibility of projects differently than a lot of utilities do. We want to be growing beside you, not behind you, or at 100% cost back to you and your community and the project. We want to be able to kind of put our skin in the game with you. And so, if you are looking at expansions, if you're looking at recruiting somebody, business to come in, let us know so we can figure out how we can be a player to support you and make that look even better as those projects are competitive. And the other is, we have a foundation that serves our communities, and we love brick-and-mortar projects. And so, if as a community, there is something that you're looking at investing in, but you're not sure how you're going to fund that, you have an opportunity to apply for a grant through the Black Hills Corporation Foundation to help pay for that. So, things that we've contributed to are library projects, parks projects, swimming pool projects, a number of different things in our different communities. We just want to be able to make sure that you're enjoying living, working, and playing here, because that's the case for many of our employees. We serve communities that we live, work, and play in.
Well...
For the same reason, I'd suggest we table this until next month.
Yes, we talked about this too, and we need, I wanted to ask you, we're going to table this until we have a chance to, because 25 years is a long time. And I see that there's three groups of 25-year citizens in this. There was Can, and then there was Source, wasn't there?
Correct, correct.
So, and I'm, but I'm just, this is pure curiosity. Suppose we decide not to renew this contract, what's our, I know that's kind of, so what happens? Because you own, I mean, you have the franchise. We own this, right? Is that the way this works?
No, so...
I mean, who owns the pipe, the line?
We own the pipes and the line and the ground.
So, what happens if we don't renew this?
Yeah.
Do you take your, do you bite, take your bite and go home?
We would love to not ever have to do that. We're totally invested in our community and the rural location. We hope that we could come to a agreement of how that would work. But that's something that the company would honestly have to look at in our rural environment. It's a big investment that we have in the ground here. And if we're not returning income off of that investment, or there's, you know...
And that's why you want the 25 totally, basically, so you're not asking to do it?
Well, just to have the security and the good faith of the community that we can continue to be partners into the future here.
Thank you, I just had to add.
What do you have?
Yes.
On your bill, you have a finance fee already on the bill.
The franchise fee?
Yes.
Yes. Yep, so we are currently collecting the franchise fee, and that's a local tax for the city. So, we collect that, and we write a check annually back to the city of Crofton for that. So, that's a pass-through. But it has that term limit on it, so that's why we're here, is it deadlines April, April of this year is when that kind of ceases, the term limits out, so it kind of ceases to exist unless we renew that, because it's tied in there, if you read it, as an addendum to the franchise itself. When it was originally written, it was written as one ordinance, and then as they wrote it, they wrote it tied specifically to that. And so, we just want to make sure that we're cleaning that up and allowing the community to continue to utilize its funds.
But if they did choose to sign a contract for that, would you still collect the finance fee?
No, that would turn out, and we would no longer be collecting that. Good question.
I already know the answer, but maybe you can explain to the people here how, what exactly they're getting for this, because as you pointed out, the franchise fee is a pass-through tax, so everybody that pays the right way back should pay the tax back to the city. What does Black Hills Energy put into the system in order to use the right of the city? What is their financial contribution?
To use the right of way of the city?
Right.
I don't, we don't pay a fee for that. I don't believe.
Okay, so the franchise fee, you guys are not paying a thing. It's the citizens paying the bill that actually gets the franchise fee, is that correct?
Well, so not all of our communities collect a franchise fee. That's kind of an added bonus of having an investor-owned utility being able to come in and utilize that. And then it's the city, the government's choice whether or not they want to take an opportunity to utilize that piece of it.
So, if there wasn't a franchise fee, what would Black Hills be paying the city in order to use the right of way that the city owns?
So...
I believe the agreement, well, the reason we have the agreement is so we can say that we agree together that we can use the right of way.
Right.
There's no cost to us.
Right, it just adds another energy choice into the community.
Just so everybody understands.
Yeah, is that what the franchise fee does? It's simple?
No, they're two completely separate things, which is why we like them to be two completely separate ordinances. And historically, some of the older companies who have written those franchises didn't do it that way, but that's why we like to split them up, so again, they're not even tied to each other. So, the franchise agreement just says, as the community, you're letting us have our pipe in the ground in your easements and provide natural gas to your citizens. And it lays the rules out for that.
And for that privilege, you collect the franchise fee and pay it back to the city?
You have the ability to levy that fee.
Are there any other communities that you pay a separate fee of the franchise fee for the use of their easement?
No.
What if your pipeline crosses personal property?
There should be an easement or a service line agreement that will sign before we put that to run that customer.
Who sets the rate at .0087?
So, that was set by the city council at the time of that agreement being signed. So, if that's something you want to look at, we'd be willing to have a conversation about it.
So, we can change that fee if we want.
It's something we would want to talk about together.
I believe the Public Service Commission regulates that too, so.
Okay, yes. Yeah, it's, well, it only comes up once every 25 years. That's right.
I don't know if I'll be here in 25 years.
I'll have to, I should go and have Pat by then, won't I?
He comes, or I'll be here.
Deal. Well, thank you for your time today, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, and we're going to go do this.
If, I realize there's a time constraint, so if they decide they're going to move forward, I'll recommend they wait this for a week, so we're running to a time.
Well, and if you do have further questions, please reach out to us ahead of time. Oftentimes, we'll kind of, usually it's with the city attorney that we have those conversations with if there are further questions.
That's why we, that's why we have them.
Exactly right, yes.
DM Joe's contact.
I will get it.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
And if you'd like us to be here at the meeting next month, we'll certainly make sure that we're here as well.
Thank you, very much. Okay, and I know you, I know you came away, I saw your eight-county car.
I was about three and a half hours.
From Grand Island?
Well, I was in Broken Bow.
Okay, yeah. Okay, next, we're getting lots of information tonight, folks. So, next we have with us a representative from JEO Consulting Group. This would be Steve Park.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a handout also, and then I'll grab the mic.
I probably lost the episode. I'm pretty good at that.
All right, well, once again, my name is Steve Park with JEO Consulting Group, and I've got some information that I'd like to go over with you tonight. The mayor contacted, or I had contact with the mayor, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, and came up on Friday, February 1st, and met with the mayor and a few others. And I thought, I've been doing this for about, well, actually, over 40 years. And I thought, I, I've been doing this for about thirty, well, actually over forty years. Don't want to date myself too much, but anyway, I thought, okay, we'll have about an hour meeting. And I think it was about two and a half hours later, I drove out of town. We had a really, we had a really good meeting, had a lot of good discussion. And so what I'm here to talk about tonight is, the mayor indicated the possibility of appointing a street superintendent, and then also a city engineer. So the first thing I want to talk about is the street superintendent appointment. So that is a, that is an appointment by the city to appoint an individual to be the street superintendent. And what the street superintendent's duties are, are, are in regard to what's called the road program. And that are, that is the preparation of documents through the Nebraska Department of Transportation. And the three documents that are prepared over here is the one and six-year plan, which that's actually due March 1st. And what that is, is a plan for future street improvements. There's the one-year plan and the six-year plan. And so that really is a document to use for planning for future street improvements. Doesn't mean there's a commitment to do those projects, but it is used, most communities use, use that for planning for future street improvements. The other document that's required to be done is, that's usually in May or June. There's a lane mile report update that's done. So if there's any new streets that are constructed, constructed, or an annexation that would take in new streets, that lane mile report is updated to include those streets. Because that's one of the items that is used in the calculation for the city to get what's called highway allocation money. That comes from the state, and I'll touch on that as well. And then the last document is a revenue and expenditure report document. That's prepared in, in the latter part of the year, it's due by December, in December. And that basically is the revenues and the expenditures that were, the revenues that came into the street fund, and expenditures that were, came out of the street fund for, for that fiscal year. And so those are the documents that the street superintendent, the appointed street superintendent would prepare on behalf, behalf of the city. So if the city appoints a street superintendent, they get what's, what's called, an incentive payment from the state for higher, for appointing a street superintendent. And so the, the city gets a thousand dollars from the state every year they appoint a street superintendent. And so that's what, that's what we would charge if the city decides to appoint a street superintendent, or me from JEO. And so really, that's a pass-through, a pass-through cost. So it really doesn't cost anything, anything to the city. Positive thing for the city is that you don't have to deal with it, we take care of that for you, so. The highway allocation money from the state, that is based on the, the city's population, length, number of lane miles, and motor vehicle registrations. I believe this last fiscal year, the city received about eighty-seven thousand dollars in highway allocation money. And then there was another, these are just approximate numbers, numbers, approximately seven thousand dollars in motor vehicle fees that you receive from the state. So with the eighty-seven thousand dollars, or what, what you get for highway allocation money, the city has to match that with twenty-five cents on the dollar, local match, okay? So eighty-seven, twenty-five percent of eighty-seven thousand dollars, whatever that is, you have to match that locally. And that money is supposed to be used for street-related items. So for another, for example, snow removal, street improvements, drainage-type work, gravel for streets, salaries for street maintenance people, those types of things, anything street-related, that's what that money is to be used for. If it's to fix a water line, can't use that money to fix a water line, so. So there are some restrictions on it. Uh, but anyway, that's, that's what, that's what the street superintendent does. It's a yearly appointment, it is by name, so I, when, in talking to the mayor, I indicated that if the city wanted to appoint someone from JEO, that, that could be me. Uh, I am a Class A street superintendent, and I've been doing this for over 25 years, so I know what I'm doing, so. I'll take care of you, I guess, so. One of the things that we're, you're a little bit under the gun, is that the one and six-year plan is due, actually due March 1st. Uh, I did take a look at the, at the, at the, last year's plan, did talk to the mayor about that. And we did contact the state. They're okay if there's a little bit of a delay on submitting that, or, or getting that document done. And I'm not pressing you to appoint me necessarily, but you do need to get that done. So you have your, get the one and six-year plan put together, which really, you could take last year's plan, and we can just modify it, or keep it the same, whatever you want to do. But you'll need to have a public hearing and a pass for resolution at a city council meeting soon. So we get that, that doc, those documents in. But like I said, we did talk to the state, they understand the situation, and they'll, they'll, they'll give you some raise period on it. So any questions about that?
Would that be something you would recommend we have the full council to pass?
Yes.
And, you know, if by the March council meeting, I assume the place is up.
But we can play him with that.
You can, but I'm talking about the one and six-year plan.
And I don't, I don't know what, I did, I did give the mayor a, and I actually have a, a copy, is if, if the, if the city appointed me as the street superintendent, we'd have, we have an, we would have an agreement, and basically outlines those tasks that we would do, and, and then also to feed the incentive payment. Uh, if they can do that tonight, or if they want to do it tonight, that's fine. Uh, or if you can't, that's okay too. My thought was, if you decide to do it tonight, or wait till March, then we'd need to have, uh... We'd have to, well, and if you do it tonight, then I could come back at your March meeting, and we could probably have the public hearing, and just kind of take care of it at that meeting, if, if you want to do that.
What I recommend you do is if you're intending on appointing Steve and JEO, that you do that tonight with, and also give the mayor the authority to sign the agreement, once I have a chance to do it. So that in the meantime, we can get that ball rolling, and if the agreement's fine, we can get started at work. So that's just stuff, it definitely...
I actually have a, you don't have to do it, I have a copy of it. Like I said, I've been, I've been doing this for a while, so I try to be prepared, but sometimes I'm not, so. But you don't have to look at it tonight, it's fine.
You can, I don't need to make a motion, you need to recommend approval of Steve as the street superintendent, and also appoint JEO as city engineer, if that's what your intention is. And then they would need to vote on it.
I do recommend Steve Park as our street engineer, and JEO as our city engineer. And ask then for a vote to approve.
Correct, so they need to make a motion and then vote.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll second. And we'll take a, I don't know where my votes are.
And you might want to...
It's not on my table.
You may want to include in that motion that you're also authorizing the mayor to sign this document at such a time that it's approved, if that's the case.
Got that, Cap? Yep. So moved.
So moved and seconded, and vote then by, let's see, let's vote, uh, Larry?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's for the, that's for the street superintendent and the city engineer, okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Yeah, too. We'll try to, if I keep you an hour and a half, next time I'll buy you lunch.
Like I said, that time went by real fast. Do you, do you want me to stay around for the rest of the meeting, or I can?
I don't think, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet, you bet. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. We will be in touch.
You came from Norfolk, I hope.
Pardon me?
You came from Norfolk.
Actually, I did not, I came from our Wahoo office, so.
Did you? Get home, man. Drive carefully. Okay, Ryan cannot be here till next week, or till next meeting. I spent, Ryan Lecker is our, handles our insurance account and country, and I spent an hour or two with him in his office, we went through the whole policy. There's some things, of course, will be changing around with employees and the health insurance and so forth, so there's... But, um, he couldn't make it tonight. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna take a break, and then we're gonna listen to the, we've got another group. Okay, let's take a little break.
It's hard, it is hard, it's hard.
Okay. Can you talk to him at all about it? I think... I think that you're getting the...
No. He knew, but obviously asking. So what event did you have? What event did you have?
That's right. Earl Seacare. I think, I'm trying to think of a guy, I know of, of Earl, I can't think of the last name, I'm not Seacare, but I do. And that might not be the same guy. If I'm thinking of the same guy, he passed away a couple of years ago. Yes. Lee Far. Right by the airport, yep, yep, that's the same guy, he passed away a couple of years ago. Very nice guy. I used to have coffee with him every month, every couple of weeks down town. He's, he's, he actually bought a vehicle for me one time, an old S10 pickup truck. Real nice guy, he used to put up my dad's hay. Boy, he was quite the teddy bear, as far as his size, you know, the big guy, he'd go out and he'd help. There you go. There you go. Okay, I see. Yeah, like I said, he used to put up my dad's hay. My dad's guys, it's not a whole lot. I'm helping him. He would come and do that. That's a nice guy. You know that, I don't know who owns that, but that guy's been hauling some of that stuff away. We had a couple of guys sitting out there. Yeah. That, that had a duly sent there forever. It's gone. It got, and I don't know where it went, but he came hauling some of that stuff away. Must've been about a week ago. In fact, somebody called it, cause that white duly that was sitting there, he pulled out the highway to haul it away. For some reason, it was left there upside the road, put up. And then the next day, it's gone, it's out of the way. Yeah, it's gone. Yeah, it looked like it was in pretty good shape at the age, you know, they can't even.
Well, here's an in first place for six million locations in the sub-districts. Yes. And it's with the power it's told. It's not like they used to do that. Yeah.
And we don't want that.
But take it in history.
I'm just gonna ask.
Okay, thank you. Let's call the meeting back to order. Next on the agenda is a representative from the Crofton Volunteer Field Association. And that would be Mr. Jeremy Bushcamp.
My name's Mark.
You're not Mark. Don't worry. I know this crowd. I can hear them down down. They're still yelling.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Bushcamp. I'm here representing the Crofton Volunteer Field Association. Crofton Volunteer Field Association is a nonprofit association that we formed to provide a framework to protect the money raised from the youth, youth, summer youth sports programs and provide a framework for the future to make sure that the, that there's always money there available for the Crofton Youth Sports Programs. And the other purpose, I guess, is to, to provide a framework to support the money raised and save for future capital improvement projects down at the softball field complex. So that's the purpose of our organization and I guess we're, we're here tonight to present an updated, updated field use agreement that we thought needed, we looked at again, we presented to the, to the council. We're currently updating this agreement to give us a framework that allows us to apply for some public grants that are available for, for monies to a huge capital improvements at the field. This agreement would give us a framework or give us the authority to apply for those grants to, to make, make capital improvements. This past summer, we, well, we've, we've completed a couple of capital improvements down there. We completed a concession stand with volunteer laborers and some, some donated money from, from Farmers Emergency State Bank and some other community, community members. And then this past summer, we did, we did a improvement project on the lower field down there to, which included the delivery of, what was it, thirty-nine tons of agri-lime for the lower field? Two hundred tons. Yeah, that's right. Thirty-nine tons of, yeah, two hundred tons. Two hundred tons of agri-lime on the lower field. And that, the funding for that project actually came from our old softball association funds, our, our field improvement funds of the old softball association, which is, which is, you know, basically it was, it was the old funds that were raised for the capital improvement projects down there. So that money came from there and we completed that project this last summer. I guess going down the road, we have a few different, well, we have quite a few different capital improvements that we'd like to make down there to improve the function and the look of the fields and, and like I said, provide a framework for the future and make sure that there's always money there available for our programs. Any questions?
Is this our association a five oh one C three?
We are currently a five oh one C four. We're a nonprofit. We would really like to explore converting to a five oh one C three. We just haven't had anybody volunteer with the time to go through the paperwork yet. But that's in our plan, I guess, down the road.
What's the difference between a five oh one three C and a five oh one four?
Five oh one C four means that we are tax exempt, but we are not, our profits are tax exempt, but your, our donations to us are not tax deductible. A C three would mean that your donations to us would be tax deductible as well.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, I just wanna say that the tot, the, one of the reasons that I asked this group to come in was so that, so that the public and the board understands what they're doing down there. And because it is on city land, this, the city has to recognize and accept that they are, what they are doing, basically. And we're going to do that in a way that will make it possible for them to then apply for more money and so forth. Because they have to know. I think that anybody that wants to help them out, I'm, I'm gonna do this for you. If you wanna, if you want to give them money, even though it's not tax deductible, or if you wanna volunteer time, the spring is coming. And they have, they're planning on putting around thirty-five grand in that field down there. And they've already put a bunch in there. And this is, I am told that that field, one of the two fields, or whatever is used at least every night and sometimes day and night. There's, they wanna put up events and so forth and so on. So just, just be aware that good things are happening. Hopefully we'll get some, some tournaments back in town and that will help everybody. Okay? So, moving on, we're gonna, we're gonna take a look at that, what we need to do with them just to, just to recognize that they have a right to be there because they're on city property. Then, okay, next on the agenda, the council would like to welcome Ken Swazki.
You're welcome, Suzie.
Oh, okay.
Cheryl. We had a meeting last Monday night. Loud, you sure you need it? It'll be really loud. We had a meeting last Monday night to discuss, I had a call from someone, someone had called and asked, and I think I mentioned this before, called and asked about donating some money to Crofton Pool. Well, we sent in Ben Swazki's design and we sent in some maybe, or Brett gave us some estimates to fix a pool house. Well, that person called back and is interested in backing the whole pool project. But she has some things she wants done too. She'd like three estimates and honestly, you guys, I was so floored by this. I'm not even sure, I'm sure Mayor Lawhead was the same way. I know Kim was. We were all pretty, you know, pretty excited about it. But there's a lot of things to be done with this. And after our meeting Monday night, we discussed the possibility of using the pool restoration funds to maybe fund the engineer and maybe then also someone who talked about doing the groundwork and stuff, maybe do some core testing of the soil. And I think all of us at that meeting decided that the pool restoration fund money, we would like the board to consider using that to test the soil, to see if we could possibly do the pool down there. And then we could get some estimates to this lady and see if she would pay for a brand new pool. And honestly, you guys, we were floored. We didn't, we thought they'd make a monetary donation. I had no idea that they would come forward and want to pay for the whole project.
Does she have any idea what it's gonna cap out at?
No, and honestly, I had no idea.
But didn't she mention something in the nine hundred thousand?
Well, she, we sent her about four hundred thousand and then she comes to me, why didn't you put the cement and the fence and everything on there? Because basically I told her, we were looking for, just seeing if they'd want to donate some money so we could put it in the pool restoration fund to move forward. So now we're all kind of excited and kinda nervous and hoping that the board will help us move forward on this. Because I get to be the first one on the slide. If we get it actually done. But I, I just wanted you guys to know that we would like you to consider getting, having, what was it, ground testing?
Yeah, well, we need the soil samples.
Why are you, what are you testing for?
Well, because of the cement, I think you have to have an engineer and the soil tested.
Right. They would all have to be done as part of the pool project to make sure that, okay, let's say we put it, okay. Let's say that we keep it where it's at and we put it to the east side of the current pool. It doesn't have to be there, but the picture, the way Ben drew it up, that's where he put it at. And I've talked with San Antonio offices engineer and Ben, there's lots of different ways you can do that. Now, we know, we know the old pool has, and I'd rather not do this for a half an hour now, but we know that the old pool has a lot of groundwater problems and there's ways to raise the pool up or to put in drainage tile and things, or put it somewhere else. If we got a better place to put it, you know, that's purely academic. My part of this is, I, I know I've sat down with Ben who designed it and that's what he does for a living. He runs two offices for Cody Pools in San Antonio. I've sat down with their city engineer and we've gone over all of these things. Rather than do this now, I've got all of the details. And I'd like to sit down with whoever, whether it's you guys or North Park people and kinda go over what we've got so you can see where we're at. Hopefully you've seen the design somewhere. And again, that's not a set design. It could be changed for anything. But it's, it's more of a design to make it more appealing to adults to also partake in time of the pool. So there, if there is a YouTube video, I can tell you how to find that if you wanna put that in the notes. Andrew, I think we did that once this fall, so.
I forwarded the packet to Cheryl. Cheryl, you have the pictures of the, that dream pool or whatever. You don't.
They were in the paper.
They were in the paper.
So. I got a question. Have you guys got a board? Cause that was, you're telling me a bunch of people that kinda.
We were raising money.
Okay. Have you went around Crofton and looked at four, maybe three different sites that would be better than where it is today?
Honestly, there, we didn't. All we were looking for was for money.
Well, I understand.
I had no idea. We haven't got this far.
From being, from being here a long time, that, at that time, we were great to give, how many years ago?
Yeah.
Not saying that they made a bad choice. We didn't have the research we got today to figure out ground moisture. We gotta look at drainage. We gotta look at a lot of things. When the creek gets high, we got a problem big time down there. I was just wondering if you guys went around town looking for different sites that we could consider to make it a better aspect for a pool instead of down in that.
Seriously, it could not be over when she called. I was so, literally, I was like, she called me at work and I was so excited.
Was she had a timeline?
But, no, and honestly, I called her back cause I thought there was a timeline. That's why we were trying to hurry it. And she said there was no rush.
Now, what happens if we gave you the okay to use the restoration funds? Is that about, what, thirteen thousand?
Eighteen thousand something, not quite nineteen thousand.
If we gave you the okay to do that and then the engineer says, no, that'd be a bad spot, or if he said, okay, that would be a good spot. And then we came in and we gave her total, what it would be and she went, you know, are you guys willing to, to spend that eighteen thousand that you have there and then possibly have nothing when we're done? That's my question.
I know, but we don't have that much now and I.
Yes, I know, I know. I'm just asking.
I, I, I think that whatever company. Yeah, whatever company, and we, we have to find a, a third company yet to get an estimate from, from them. I think we have two at this point. So we got the first one from Ben and then we've got a company in Wisconsin. And we're hoping to get the other company out of Lincoln to do that.
Honestly, we haven't done anything with that yet cause we have to figure out if, if it can even be there. You know, you guys, there's gotta be some.
And, and any cool company. Any, and any cool company is going to insist on their, a soil sample and soil studies. So, so we're, we're gonna spend it somewhere at some point in time. So we figure if we could get started on finding an engineer so that when the frost goes out of the ground, if there's other suggestions, I'll look at it and what you were saying, Larry. Crofton owns a bunch of lands and unfortunately, most of the land that Crofton has is somewhere lower than what the swimming pool is currently at. So that does kinda make it a.
There is a couple sites that I've been driving around looking at. I think if you talk to the owners and if they know it's going for a community, we might have a better chance of putting it someplace where we don't have this problem called surface water coming up and bubbling everything up and ruining our pipes. I think we need to research a little bit on some of these, and there's some, there's some guys around Crofton that have some, kinda, kinda, I think, some ideal ground and the streets are there and the parking could be there. I mean, it's a lot.
Is it in city limits or not?
Well, we'll work on it.
Yeah, but, but anyway, like I say, I've, I've got all this information and Cheryl, you've got it. If you guys wanna sit down or the new North Park committee or whatever and go over these sub times so that we try and get on the same page here and move forward so when the ground's unthawed or that we can.
You're not thinking we'll have it by June, are you?
I want it by June.
Well, you know, with the, the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services, you go down there and there's different things that you have to step through to.
There's all, all, all the grants or all the permits and everything would all be state approved.
Right. But you know, that might not just fly through like a, you know, government.
Right. Talking to, talking to somebody from Yankton with the, the new Yankton, their project over there. They were suggesting that their pool, whatever you wanna call it, Water Park or whatever, might not be open until the summer of twenty-one.
Right, they were gonna use their old pool this summer and then close it.
Right.
I mean, it wasn't hard to build their new pool. They were closed for the entire summer.
Yeah, and if, if we could work something where we started by fall, so that we were open next summer, we might find, and this was a suggestion from the Yankton people, we might find some families just come to Crofton cause it might be the only pool that's available in the area. Who knows? But a buck's a buck.
And I did talk to a cement person and said, you know, when the engineer looks at it, if that's the only spot that we have available to it and we have to tile it or raise it two, wow, if we have to raise it a couple feet or tile it, that is a possibility too. And honestly, the huge cement base around it was cheaper than I thought it was gonna be. So maybe, I don't know, maybe we could make this work. It wouldn't be so expensive and we could have a new pool with a sly and a mushroom.
Are you thinking of that slide?
What, that slide?
The, I, I can't tell you what gunite is, but it's a form of concrete. The, uh, I, I can't tell you what gunite is, but it's a form of concrete that, that's a spray concrete with rebar that they use to build pools now. And I don't know what they used in the old pool, but I'm sure construction methods are a lot better. Was it?
Yes.
Good.
They said this, this pool shall is lifetime guaranteed.
They said it's a lifetime, lifetime guarantee. Well, I don't know, there's gotta be an asterisk on it somewhere, but, um, anyway, it was also suggested that a new pool would be a lot more energy efficient and cost less money to operate, so...
Well, I, I would...
Yeah, this one has a zero entry, so even for the elderly and the little kids, I mean, it would be a benefit for everybody.
Okay, um, in the balance sheet for January thirty-first, the pool fund has eighteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. Um, it'd be great, you know, plans go the way you are, but we all know construction has its, and government permits, it's gonna be slow, so, uh, my concern is, if we go ahead and give you that eighteen thousand dollars to do the study, what happens if the studies are more than that? And then what happens if, I'm just playing the devil's advocate here, I want, I'm wanting to look at it, and, and if this, if you call this particular person back and we say, "Are you gonna have a set limit?" And when she cut it off, or are you gonna pay, because I don't want to get started, and then she comes and...
This is her exact words. She said she wants to make sure we have enough money to do the project. Those were her exact words. But she, but like you said, there's, there's and ifs or buts.
There's variables, yes.
But the only thing is, is we could maybe put like the soil testing and some of the engineer costs on this, you know, when we, when we send it into her with the estimate, maybe we could add the engineering or the soil testing costs, or maybe they would cover some of that, too.
Did, did you, uh, get an approximate number, ballpark, out of the blue, what this project would be from start to finish with all these things that you were talking about?
That's what, that's what you...
Okay, what's, we, we started, first of all, with just the pool basin and, uh, like the slide, the diving board, as it sits without the concrete, without the pool house, without the fence.
The pool house is on that, or just the re, re, gutting area, the one we gave her?
Okay, but, but the pool estimate for the new one, um, is a lot less than you might think, uh, three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, which you can't build a great house for that price anymore.
No.
But, um, that's without the, that's without the concrete decking around it, that's without a pool house, and that's out, without fencing. Because we figured if we can get that close, we can figure out how to mix a bunch of concrete and put up some cement blocks for a pool house, or, or, um, if we keep it down where it's at, that we renovate the old pool house and not build a new pool house, uh, has another alternative. So, again, bottom line, more than willing to show you what we got.
Then you're looking at five hundred thousand, if you got three hundred and sixty for the, five hundred thousand, probably between five and six hundred and fifty thousand at the moment.
You know, maybe, maybe six hundred with everything would be a good figure.
Six hundred and eighteen thousand is what the cement...
How much?
Six hundred and eighteen thousand now, and then also Cheryl talked about maybe putting a new bathhouse on instead of remodeling that bathhouse, so maybe if this bathhouse is crap, maybe we should just try that, put that on there and see if they would, you know, not like a super fancy one, but put something decent on there and...
Yeah, but you guys all know, and everybody out here in this crowd knows, if we're gonna do a project like this, back when we first had pools, we had, we had a brand-new piece. So, I don't disagree about fixing the pool house up. If we're gonna have a new pool, it should be a hundred percent all-new, so we start out at zero instead of repair.
Well, I'd be all for that.
Well, that's what I'm trying to look at, the number for, for people to understand what, what we're up against, and I understand that we don't have, uh, you know, you got piping, you got chemicals, you got all this, all this stuff that we have not even touched yet. The pool is a concrete and, uh, and, uh, the pool house and all this other stuff. You know, we gotta have all this put together as a package, that nothing's uncovered, nothing is left outside.
But the chemicals and running the pool is gonna be cheaper than this back one.
Well, you still gotta have pumps, you still gotta have all that stuff.
Well, that's all, that's all in the...
That's the week.
The boilers, the heated tubes, and there are three lots on...
As far as I know, I, I didn't really look specifically to see if there was a boiler toilet.
Well, but, but it includes the aeration and all that stuff.
That would be a functioning pool without the deck and the pool house.
Well, I would like to see a...
Well, that, well, that, is that like a, what you, what you call it, a bowl or a bowl?
It's a, it's a zero entry.
It's like a pond, right? I mean, it's set, does it set, what's it supposed to set in? Is it supposed to set in cement, or is it supposed to set in ground?
No, it's all custom poured, it's not a bring-in anything.
Oh, I thought it was like a shell.
I thought it was like a shell too, but...
You told me that.
I thought it was a shell.
It's, well, I called, called it the bowl, the basin, but it's...
I thought it was like a sink brought in and set down on top of the pedestal, hadn't I?
No, that might, I don't think that would get down the highway.
If this engineer comes in, or whoever's gonna do this study, let's say, hypothetically, let's say you were thinking down there by the, oh, it's, you sit down there by the pool on the east side, and we all know whoever lived in this town across it knows it's been a swamp, and I've known since a kid it's been a swamp. Do we want to spend the money down there, and then all of a sudden, it's not feasible, all this money is gone because that engineer has to get paid for what he does? My question is, we need to look at some sites first before we go over and do it.
My idea is we need to get an engineer to look at the site. We don't know anyone.
No, I know, but I mean...
Right? Does, does that make sense?
If Larry's got ideas, if Larry's got ideas on where would be good places to look at, I mean...
She didn't specifically say site, you know, but she was thinking, you know, we'd put it down there. She's been here, she knows this community, so she knows.
Would she consider putting the, um, surely she's got a top figure, you know, so...
I, I tried, but she really wouldn't do that.
Would she put that, you know, like put it into a CD or something, so that we know what's there to work with?
Didn't sound like we were gonna get any cash money, or it would have to go towards the...
Well, that, that's what I mean, you could put it in a thing, but I'm gonna put it in and...
I don't know.
Designate it.
It sounded like it was more money that was gonna have to be spent, and maybe she even would pay the whole thing to whoever you're hiring.
I, I can't...
Right, but she needs to know what the whole thing is.
But I, you guys, if you guys would decide what you want to do, and probably gonna have to have an engineer and somebody...
Absolutely, there's no way we can...
Well, I do think that when we talked in our last meeting, that you could use that pool restoration money if you wanted to do some checking, you know, so we can get this to her.
I mean, all we gotta do is make some phone calls and find people that do engineering. I mean, they do soil, they do soil studies all the time for housing out at the lake. I mean, those are the same kind of engineers that put together studies for that, so...
Yeah, we have, we certainly, we surely have local people, don't we? I mean, local states, like you said, out of Lincoln or something for another estimate, because like if your estimate's coming from out of state, I just wear them.
There's something on it.
But if they... That would probably, what, what Ben had recommended was that specifically, he's doing the design all the way down to everything. All that would have to be done is submitted to the project engineer and the company, and he did it for five hundred dollars without a commission.
I know, I know, and I appreciate that.
Bottom line is, is he would also recommend that, he basically, and again, we're taking a lot of time, and probably...
Yeah.
He said, "They're guessing on what labor costs would be, because obviously, it's gonna be less expensive up here than it is in Texas, because it's a lot more expensive in Texas for them to build than it is in Florida." So, uh, bottom line, that's kind of a crapshoot, so wouldn't want us to actually come up here, but when they move up this direction, there's a company, he said he thought it was out of Lincoln, that usually does most of their work when they are...
But, you see, that's what I'm, I'm, and he would understand, like another company might not, that part of that would depend upon where you're born, right? That's why you're talking about the soil thing, because you've got to make what you do compatible with where you put it.
Right, well, yeah, but, but, when they're building in San Antonio, they have to take in chisels and, uh, basically hammer out the rock.
Yeah, right.
So, it's definitely a little different up here, so of course, yeah, it's...
That's what I mean, though, is that in his estimate, is that he would...
I suppose you can estimate without, you know, doing anything.
Sure.
But I, I, I digress at this point, so...
That's good, thank you. Okay, um, we'll move on, and, uh, the next thing on the item, um, is committee heads and committees, and I'm not ready for that, because we still got some to complete, so I think we'll just put that off till we get them all. Um, by, but, but one thing everybody please keep in mind, um, that in March, we're gonna delay that, our meeting a week, and hopefully then we'll have our new board members, and then we'll be able to approve a lot of things, so we're putting things off a certain amount. Okay, um, I do want to, um, appoint and ask for the, a motion and a vote to appoint Mike Chase as the Planning and Zoning Director.
I'll make motion to appoint Mike, Mike in zoning.
I'll second it.
And motion and seconded, uh, let's have the vote, please, Larry?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
And Mike, would you, is there anything you want to say about anything? He's been working.
Mike's so good at this job, it's working probably not in the street.
Doing a lot of reading.
We're in a hurry.
First of all, I want to thank several individuals, John Zabidil and Erin Dennis, for their kind of cooperation and helpfulness in the process. We have been working, uh, to help the city to become and continue to be a pleasant, useful, valuable place to live. That is really the criteria for the zoning administrator's task. My job is to help you stay within the ordinances of the city, but encourage you to enjoy your life to the best and the fullest. We're not a policeman, although we have certain limits that we have to go by. We're your servant. As the zoning administrator, that's my thing, serve you. We're, we're working with the city council, uh, an orderly and pleasing environment is what we're after. Uh, it's good to follow others. The groundwork has been laid well, very appreciative of their cooperation, their helpfulness, and the work that they have done. Uh, the city is able to move forward, that's the purpose of our position. A few days ago, I became the zoning commissioner, and, uh, since then, uh, we have had the opportunity to work with a, uh, individual in our area who's wanting to sell property. The deal's not completed yet, probably told them it'll next month, but there is some administrative plat work that needs to be done through the county, and the city needs to approve those, so we're in that process. This is all done on the city's level, it's ready to go to the county. Uh, there is also a building permit pending, a couple signatures, and on its way. So it'll be a new dwelling approved, hopefully within the next week, a couple signatures waiting on that, most of the utilities. So, uh, also in the last week, I spoke with an individual who was wanting to purchase property in the area, and, uh, in cooperation with the local realtors, he's examining some of the properties, and say, "We may have another." God knows what can happen when good people work together, and that's the commitment I have, and that's the commitment the city needs, and I will continue to work with.
Thank you, thank you, Mike. Great. Okay, next on the agenda, we have financial statements for November, December, and January, and we're not gonna spend the time to go through all of those.
Cheryl, approve the building. Oh, yes, the building permit for, um...
No, no, that's not done, it's not done.
That's not done yet?
No.
We need Cedar Knox and Great King and Slack Hill.
The, the person that built against them, uh, they, uh...
Yes.
Do you have an application or...
Yes, they've signed.
If the person that has applied, uh, has signed it, you can, you can, you want to convince me, you know, whether you put it in the signatures and approve it, or you can approve it pending those little signatures for the utility, yeah, just separate.
So then if they signed off on it before the next meeting, they could get started?
Correct, that's right. So there's one and two ways you can...
Okay. Mike, did you catch that? He said, yeah, he said that since the owners have signed off on that, that they've signed the application, um, that we can, uh, approve that pending the other two signatures, and then they can pick it up when it's complete.
That was my desire.
Okay.
Sorry, I misunderstood you earlier, so...
Okay, then, then we'll entertain motion to do that, to approve a building permit for Chad, Chad and Kim Gunther, and, uh, pending their signatures for a couple utilities, then we will approve that. So if I could have a motion to that effect?
We'll make a motion, approve the building permit for Chad and Kim Gunther.
Okay.
On the signature of...
Upon signature of the, uh, utility.
Okay.
I seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve that pending, uh, or subject to those two signatures, and then we will vote, uh, Pam?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yep.
Okay, so the financial statements, as I said, we have November, December, January, Kathy's doing a great job, the, um, people from Clerksburg have been in touch with her, helping her do the closing tools and, and moving along, so we're gonna have more and more of this, really understanding where we are, I hope. Um, so I'm not gonna do a whole lot. Pam's always found, already found that there's eighteen thousand in for the pool, so we know that much. But I do want to say, because I know, um, that this is always a thing, our city is not broke, so totally, we have five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in our accounts. So, you know, sometimes we kind of get down and think we don't have enough money, we just need to make sure we all understand how to spend them, why it's like, okay? So, I'm not gonna do any more than that. Uh, well, they're broken down, and, and, yes, there is, um, a hundred and forty-one thousand of that sits in that bond account for Sharon Street, because a lot of people paid...
Wasn't seventy-five thousand.
Um, you know, paid those ahead, or paid all of it. I'm going to talk about this a little bit in the future, but I would like to see us invest that money, because those bond payments aren't due, so we might as well be having CDs that's making some of the money that we're paying out on the bond, so we'll be looking into that. Okay, um, then, uh, we've already been through the bills, so I would entertain a motion to approve those bills that we looked at.
Make a motion to approve of the claims and payroll that is signed.
And...
I'll second.
And so moved and seconded, um, then Larry?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
Okay.
Cheryl, on the financial statements, you might mention that those are open for public inspection.
Oh, yes. Yes, those financial statements are available on open for public inspection at any time, okay?
Maybe we've got any questions?
And just holler out, and we'll do the best we can.
I mean, I've been looking at them for a year now, and I know something different every time I look at it, so...
Every time. Um, okay, now, at this time, we want to talk about jobs, and I've got two people that I want to, um, announce that we'll be hiring, and that would be Nikki Brockle for managing... And that would be Nikki Brockle for manager of the swimming pool. And Patrick, is Patrick here? He didn't make it. He's working with his group in Yankton tonight, so, um, Patrick, um, Hookstein, I always have trouble with his name. Um, well, and he's going to be joining us in about a week, and he's gonna be the new maintenance person. So, Luke will be training him before he leaves his job. So, we're happy to have those, if I can have a motion to approve them.
Make a motion to, uh, hire Patrick for the pool and the maintenance.
I'll second it.
Okay, so then, it has been moved and seconded, and so, uh, call for the vote from Pam?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Okay, the next regular council meeting is going to be held on March twentieth. As I said earlier, we're gonna delay that week. Remember, you'll be getting, I don't remember, know for sure when they're coming out, but your ballot, Tuesday, this Tuesday, uh, that'd be the nineteenth, they will be mailed up from the county clerk's office, and you'll be getting your ballots in the mail.
Five o'clock, day of, you know...
The day of the election is the twelfth of March, and they have to be in the county clerk's office by that day. So, get them mailed early. You have to put the postage on, okay? They pay it to come out, that's part of what that bill is, that we pay, okay, to the county clerk. Uh, still the cheapest election, instead of doing it, um, on site. And we're gonna be doing that for a lot of things, apparently. Um, and I think that concludes our meeting, so I, oh, yes, Mike.
This is a suggestion, the way the mail process, at least, can only pass a book, they would take it like a week, five days.
Say that again?
Would it take like five days to be mailed?
Steel meal?
It, it could, because it goes to Omaha back. I, you know, I say just get them in the mail if you want your vote to count.
Doesn't make a difference, so you vote or didn't vote.
Yeah, just vote. Exactly. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded to adjourn, uh, Larry?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.